Good evening. We will now call the regular school board meeting, May the 12th, 2015, to order. We want to give everyone a warm welcome that's here this evening. We're glad to see you all out and glad to see our young people out as well. We are going to have a very special treat again tonight from Fairlon Elementary, under the direction of Deborah Quilnen, to perform for us, and their principal is Ms. Jennifer Hadeen. And I would ask my fellow board members, as usual, we're going to go down so that we can get a better view directly after the Pledge of Allegiance and our Kids That Hope Treasure Hunters pledge. Would you please stand with us?
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Fairlon Elementary School's Drama Club is excited to perform for you tonight, I mean, this evening.
Being in Drama Club, we have learned many skills that we can use in other classes and everyday lives, such as teamwork and the ability to believe in ourselves.
We will be performing our opening song from a year with Frog and Toad kids, and a brief scene that leads into one of our favorite songs called Cookies. We hope you enjoy our performance as much as we've enjoyed performing for you.
I like to sing a little old about my good friend Toad.
(music)
Coming through, he frequently takes cheese.
(music)
He's not so good at sports, and of course, he's got those warts. But Toad has been a lovely friend to me. I love a lovely dialogue with my good friend Frog.
(music)
Chatting over cozy cups of tea.
(music)
He knows just the thing to say that will frighten any day.
Oh, Frog's been a lovely friend to me.
Hello, Toad.
Hello, Frog.
How's your winter been?
Well, I've been hibernating, so there isn't much to report. This is a very nice dream, though.
Yes, it is. Well, I'm getting ready to wake up, so you better get back to your own dream.
Yeah, I better get back to hibernating. Spring is nearly here.
Oh, I think it's just around the corner.
The sun is out, the sky is clear. We came back, spring's almost here. So let's begin another year, a year with Frog and Toad. A year with Frog and Toad. Frog, what time is it?
It's 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock's my sad time of the day.
Why?
Because that's when the mail should come.
And?
I've never received a letter.
Never?
Never, ever.
May you excuse me, Toad, I have something important to do.
Sure, go ahead, Frog. Hello, Frog.
Well, if this is my friend's mail.
What are you doing?
I'm writing a letter to Toad.
Wow.
Will you do me a favor?
Of course, we will.
Will you deliver this letter to Toad?
You want us to deliver a letter?
Yes, would you?
Absolutely. Would you listen to our letter, Toad? You can count on us. Well, gotta run.
Toad, did you happen to get any mail today?
No, I have not. I never get any. Never mind. I'm putting the cookies into the oven, and tonight after dinner, we shall have cookies for dessert.
Oh, God, what would they be done?
In seven or eight minutes, but my clock is broken.
Then how will you know when to take them out?
Hi, Toad. Hello, Mouse. Is something wrong? Yes, I'm making cookies. And? I don't know when to take them out.
Her clock is broken.
Well, how long ago did you put them in? I don't know. My clock is broken. Well, are they golden brown? I don't know. My clock is broken. But Toad, you can just check to see if the cookies are golden. Quiet, Mouse. I'm getting an idea. I could just check to see if the cookies are golden brown.
Good idea, Toad.
Well, they're perfect. Have a cookie.
Good idea, Toad.
Eating cookies, eating cookies, we're so happy eating cookies. Cookies, 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 we adore. Cookies, 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 we go cookie eating. Maybe we should stop. Let's have more. I want cookies. I want five of them. Eating cookies, eating cookies, we're so happy eating cookies. Cookies, 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 we adore. Cookies, 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 we go cookie eating. Maybe we should stop. Let's have more.
No, no, Toad. We must stop eating these cookies. I know, we'll give them to the birds. Hey, birds!
Lights!
You want some cookies?
Sure, bring them on. Wait, wait. Should we be eating these cookies? Or should we rather have worms? Worms are the product of nature. Toad is a baby. Think of the germs. I've never heard of Toad makes the tastiest cookies. Go on and try ones that are great. If you eat one of these cookies, we're here to tell you, you're gonna eat. Eating cookies, eating cookies, we're so happy eating cookies. Cookies, 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 we adore. Cookies, 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 we go cookie eating. Empty out the box and let's have more. Eating cookies, eating cookies, we're so happy eating cookies. Cookies, 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 we adore. Cookies, 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 we go cookie eating. Cookies, 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 we go cookie. Let's have more. Cookies, 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 we go cookie. Cookies!
Okay, can I take this group on the road with me?
Yeah.
You guys are fabulous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I saw, I heard singing, I saw acting, drama, and dancing, and my goodness, what beautiful voices you have. Parents, the first thing we want to do is ask you to please stand so we can applaud you for bringing your young people out tonight. Would you please stand? Thank you very much. Thank you. We certainly do appreciate all of you, and I'm sure you appreciate us, and together we produce what you saw last night. Ms. Hadeen, would you please stand? We want to give you a hand clap. I mean, you just, are you, where's Ms. Hadeen? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hadeen. The principal, she's the principal. And Ms. Deborah, would you please stand? Thank you so much. This was incredible, incredible, incredible. I truly would love to take you on the road with me. Is there anyone that wants to tell me, share with us and share with the group why this is so important, the arts? Because you did, oh, yes, I see a head. You did fabulous tonight.
Thank you. Being in the Drama Club at school was kind of important to me because it kind of helped me stop being shy and express my personality more.
Thank you for sharing that, okay? All right, anybody else? Okay, one more, one more.
Drama put a big impact on my life, and it set a career goal for me to look up to.
And what is that?
Growing up, being an actor and just doing that.
Okay, thank you all so very much. Absolutely loved all of your performances. We can't help but say we appreciate each of you young people here at St. Lucy County School District tonight. Thank you again. Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to remind our audience here this evening that if you desire to be an unscheduled speaker, please fill out the forms in the back and turn them to the left, far left here to Ms. Harrison, and we will acknowledge you and recognize you at the appropriate time. I will now state our vision for St. Lucy County Public Schools. Our vision for St. Lucy County Public School is that in partnership with our parents and community, we will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual child. Our promise is to move from good to great, focusing on our core business, and that business being the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for each child every day. At this time, I will now open up the public hearing. We have before us the proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policy 7.70, Purchasing and Bidding, Prohibition of Fraud, and Student Progression Plan for Elementary Board Members. Do you have any questions or comments? Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment or speak regarding the public items that are being presented? Seeing none come forward, Madam Superintendent, we will now receive your recommendations.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to School Board Policy 7.70 and the Student Progression Plan for Elementary Level as presented.
Board members, we have received her recommendation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hensley and seconded by Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then carries five to zero. At this time, the public hearing is officially concluded. Madam Superintendent, we will move right now to our special order of business.
Thank you, and we have several very special orders of business this evening, beginning with the United Way of St. Lucy County. I'd like to ask Mrs. Carrie Patrick to come forward at this time, please.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, St. Lucy Public Schools is proud to run a United Way campaign in our workplace each year. This year, because of the caring spirit of our employees, we did raise a significant amount of money to help families most in need in our community. In the words of our United Way leaders, "When you live united, you join thousands of others who want to turn the stories around for the most needy. United Way stabilizes families, helps children succeed, and empowers healthy lives." To share more of St. Lucy and United Way's story, I invite Mr. Monte Kosoff, who is the Vice President of Development and Marketing, to the podium. He is joined this evening by Ms. Roxanne Wells, Director of Communication and Workplace Giving, Mr. Horace Webb, the Campaign Chair, and the President and CEO of United Way, Ms. Karen Knapp.
Thank you so much for that warm welcome, Carrie. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, and School Board Members. We're delighted to be here. This is my sixth year at the podium as a staff member of United Way to acknowledge and announce the funds that were raised within the School Board Community Campaign. On behalf of United Way of St. Lucy County, our staff, board members, and the 30 agencies and programs that we are able to fund each year through our fundraising efforts, I'd like to thank you all for, again, supporting us and for Superintendent Yost serving on our board. She's very well-versed in what we do each year with these funds, and we're able to improve lives of children, families, and others in the community here. So it's my pleasure to announce that this year, between our students and employees of the St. Lucy County School District, we were able to raise $36,983 to go into our campaign this year. At this time, I'd like to ask Madam Superintendent and the Madam Chair to please come down to the floor with our CEO and Campaign Chair, Karen Knapp and Horace Webb. We have a few awards we would like to present, and we'll try and do this expeditiously and orderly. We have three categories we like to recognize, the first being the highest student campaign. And I think just as we saw tonight with the arts and having students perform, I think it's great to teach stewardship at such a young age. So for the student campaign, we have a highest award for each level of school, elementary, middle, K through eight, and high school. So the four schools to please come up would be FK Sweet, Southern Oaks Middle, Westgate K through eight, and St. Lucy West Centennial High School. Thank you all very much. Our second area of recognition is the largest employee giving by school, again, one in each category, and these are for the dedicated employees who give in their paycheck each week. For elementary school, Morningside, Southport Middle School, Westgate K through eight again, and St. Lucy West Centennial High School. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And last but not least, our award for the largest campaign overall, which is student and employee combined, Morningside Elementary, Southern Oaks Middle, Westgate K through eight, and St. Lucy West Centennial High. We appreciate the opportunity to present this evening and recognize these outstanding efforts. We're going through our grant review process right now with teams of volunteers and look forward to making this money go to good use in our community for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
I didn't want to sit down without saying thank you. You know, it starts at the top, the support that we get in the community, and we want to thank you on behalf of our Board of Directors, whom Janelle has won. Thank you so much. Thank you for helping the people of St. Lucy County.
And the United Way does so much for our students, so we thank them, and it is a pleasure to work together in partnership. Our next order of business is the Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution. And Dr. Kevin Perry, if you could come forward at this time, I think you have a few individuals to introduce as well.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost, since 1984, the National PTA has designated the first week in May as a special time to honor the men and women who lend their passion and skills to educating our children. Teacher appreciation offers the opportunity for citizens to reaffirm their commitment to parent-teacher partnerships. Teacher appreciation is also the perfect time to personally thank teachers for their sacrifices and support for children throughout the year. Although teacher appreciation was officially celebrated last week, we believe that it's only fitting to recognize and celebrate those teachers in St. Lucy Public Schools. So at this time, we invite the 2016 Teacher of the Year for St. Lucy Public Schools, Ms. Sheri Madurma, to come and officially present the resolution.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost. St. Lucy Public Schools Resolution, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 12th, 2015. Whereas the School District of St. Lucy County would like to recognize the teaching staff of St. Lucy Public Schools, May 4th through 8th, 2015, designated as Teacher Appreciation Week. And whereas the teachers have continually demonstrated their exceptional abilities, knowledge, and skill in the performance of their duties, as indicated by maintaining consistently high levels of academic achievement, and whereas their true dedication to their chosen profession, their genuine concern for the total development of each student, and pride publicly illustrated by the teachers and the success of the district. And whereas throughout St. Lucy County and across this nation, teachers open children's minds to the magic of ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and their hard work and efforts are directly responsible for creating the leaders of tomorrow. And whereas teachers fill many roles as educators, listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds. And whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers continue to have a positive influence on us, even when our school days are only memories. And now, therefore be it resolved, the School Board of St. Lucy County joins with the administration, staff, students, parents, and the communities during Teacher Appreciation Week in expressing appreciation for the outstanding performance of the teachers of this district adopted this 12th day of May, 2015.
It is a pleasure to recommend approval of this Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution.
We've heard the superintendent's recommendation. May I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingasol and seconded by Ms. Hilson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, and thank you to Ms. Madurma. Recently, she traveled to Tallahassee, where the governor also recognized her as a Shine Award recipient. She is a true role model, an example of the finest that we have in St. Lucy County, and at this time of year, it is great to recognize all of our educators for the outstanding job that they do for the students of the district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, as we've already discussed, Teacher Appreciation Week for the 2015 school year is designated as May 4th through 8th last week. But to show our gratitude for our teachers who work hard on a daily basis and help our students reach their highest potential, we're going to ask that you join us in urging all the citizens to observe teacher appreciation by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the contribution of our teachers by going to our Facebook page. If you look to the screen to your right, it says St. Lucy County Public Schools there, and it talks about teacher appreciation, and they can leave a message on our Facebook page by simply using the hashtag #ThankYouStLucyTeachers, and it's up and running on our Facebook page, and we ask everyone to take time during the month of May to recognize the wonderful contributions of the fantastic teachers here in St. Lucy Public Schools. Thank you.
Our next order of business, I'd like to ask Mr. Bill Tomlinson to come forward for a Walmart Distribution Center and Westgate K-8 collaborative effort to be recognized this evening.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Yost, it is my distinct pleasure this evening to inform you of a wonderful partnership and collaboration between Walmart Distribution Center and St. Lucy Public Schools. Several months ago, Mr. Edward Mandred, the Operations Manager from Walmart, contacted me about an opportunity that Walmart has to partner with the school board, and this would be a program linked to volunteerism, but a wonderful way to also raise funds for our programs that we operate within the school. We did some talking, discussing about what would be an appropriate venture to get into, and I remembered that several years ago, Deborah Hackett, an ESE Specialist from Westgate, had asked about building an inclusion reading garden at Westgate K-8 School, a place where all children would come to to enjoy reading together and would be free and accepted by all. We reached out to Mr. Kramner, the Principal of the school, and asked him about his willingness to partner with Walmart to do this garden, and he was right on board immediately. to partner with Walmart to do this garden, and he was right on board immediately. After we discussed with Mr. Kramner, we talked to Marty Sanders in Facilities, he enlisted Jack Collins and Bill Dunlap, and the work began with this project. I can tell you, even though it's not fully finished, it is a sight to behold from the work that has been done in this volunteer program. At this point in time, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Edward Madrid, the Operations Manager from Walmart Distribution Center, who would like to say a few words.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board. I appreciate the privilege to be able to speak with you today. As an Operations Manager and the father of an autistic child, I was thrilled to have the chance to partner with Mr. Tomlinson and Westgate K-8 School on the Inclusion Garden Project. This opportunity was made possible by the Walmart Foundation's Volunteerism Always Pays Program. This program enables Walmart associates to generate money, grant money for volunteers, volunteer hours worked with nonprofit organizations in the community of their choice. Our efforts played out through the month of April as follows. First, we supported the cleanup effort of the Autism Walk at the Tradition Square sponsored by Westgate School on April 11th. Next, we worked for a week in preparation of ribbon sales at the Distribution Center on April 20th and 21st. That included volunteers spending time promoting the sale amongst their peers, and also spent hours cutting many hundreds of colorful ribbons to cover the hallway of our Distribution Center. This ribbon sale generated cash for the garden project from our associates who were willing to participate but were unable to based on prior commitments or work schedules. Lastly, on April 25th, we came together to landscape and finish the inclusion garden at Westgate School. Our ribbon sale far exceeded any expectation that I had. Completely covered the hallway of our Distribution Center and raised $2,145 in cash from our Walmart associates. Our efforts during the month of April involved 59 Walmart associates and their families, totaling 262 hours of volunteerism. This hours allowed us to apply for the Walmart Foundation's highest grant of $5,000, making our total donation the amount of $7,145. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our Walmart associates who dedicated their cash and time to the Walmart Garden Project, and I'm also proud to have been part of a project that demonstrates what can be done in our community when two organizations come together to support such an important cause. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Rob Simatero, is our Operations Manager, Maintenance at the Distribution Center, has a drone that was able to take aerial footage of the volunteer as a man action that I'd like to present for you for your viewing at this time. You'll see, that's the many associates and their families planting the plants, assembling the trellis area that's at the beginning of the garden, and the four pads will have picnic tables for the students to be able to come together and to be able to read. It's just a good time that we had that day and planted over 90 plants and were able to assemble the trellis at the beginning of the garden. At this time, once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you today, and I'd like to present Mr. Tomlinson with a check from our ribbon sales of $2,145 on behalf of the Walmart Associates of DC70.
Madam Chair, if we could have you step forward, please? We'd love to have a photo. What a wonderful initiative. And Mr. Tomlinson, if you'll remain with us, I believe you have the next honor as well of presenting the recognition to Mr. Bob Kramner.
Actually, I have the next two, so thank you all, Steve. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Yost, it is an honor to recognize Mr. Robert Kramner, Principal of Westgate K-8. Mr. Kramner has been a longtime supporter and advocate of children with disabilities in our district. He has embraced the children, their families, and he has worked tirelessly in our community to reduce the barriers to education and inclusion for children with disabilities. His work goes, it's just remarkable, the steps that he has taken each year with this Walk for Autism, the recognition of what can be done in a school for children with disabilities, and we're so proud to have had the opportunity to work with him over the years. At this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Guzman, Assistant Principal from Westgate, and Valentina White, a Behavior Technician from Westgate, to come forward as they have a special honor and recognition for Mr. Kramner.
Good afternoon, Board Members and colleagues. We want to thank Mr. Kramner this evening for his support in all that he's done at Westgate in bringing awareness for autism. And we have two of our Board Staff Members in our ESE Department, Ms. Val White and Ms. Landis, who will be saying some words to Mr. Kramner. If you would please come up, Mr. Kramner. And they will be presenting him with an award. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Valentina White, and again, I'm a Behavior Tech at Westgate K-8. I'm also the co-chair of Walk Now for Autism Speaks on the Treasure Coast. My co-chair Jessica McLaughlin and I found out that organizing a three-county walk for Autism Speaks takes a lot of work to get off the ground. The easiest part was bringing the idea to Mr. Kramner. He's such a strong supporter of our ASD population, we knew that he would help us spread awareness and acceptance to our growing population. We're three years in on our walk, and it keeps getting bigger and bigger, and it wouldn't have been possible at all without Mr. Kramner. With his support, we've raised thousands of dollars for Autism Speaks and our own ASD units. I'm proud to tell everyone that I work for Westgate K-8 School for Robert Kramner. I want to present this plaque on behalf of all the staff and students in our self-contained ASD units at Westgate. Thank you, Mr. Kramner, for supporting us in all of our autism endeavors.
Well, this is quite an honor. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, Mr. Tomlinson, thank you so much. Ed, it was a fun day at Westgate when we put that garden together. That was a lot of fun, and your drone was definitely cool technology, so that was a lot of fun. It's been my honor, as a principal of a school, to work with students who have special needs. My ASD population is a phenomenal group of young people who just need a chance to shine, and it's always great to see that happen. The other ESE students I have at my school are loved and a part of our school, and we just appreciate them being a part of our school and our school culture. I'm very, very proud to stand before the board and to tell you that while Reading Buddies is far from new, it's been going on for decades, every ASD unit, every IND self-contained unit, has teachers who have volunteered from the regular education population to come in and be reading buddies with this group of students. It shows our commitment as a school, and I am so proud of that. As a matter of fact, I had one mother in my office yesterday, and she related the story to me that her son, who was in one of the units with IND, was out in his wheelchair in public, and his reading buddy, who was a student in another room, came running up to him in public and said, you know, "Hi, how you doing? I'm so glad to see you out here," and then told his mom that he was his reading buddy. So in that kind of atmosphere, children, all children should be feel included in school. And with that spirit in mind, I thank you for this award and this recognition. Thank you.
And Mr. Kramner, before you go away, I would like to ask that Marty Sanders come forward. At this point in time, Marty here. Also, Jack Collins and Bill Dunlap. They were so instrumental in working with Walmart and getting this garden off the ground. We wanted to show a special recognition to all of the gentlemen as well, and the individuals from Walmarts have already left, but wanted to make sure that you are recognized for the work that you did. We could not have done this without the help of all of you together.
And the recognition goes on. Mr. Tomlinson will address Mental Health Awareness Month at this time.
And I'm going to give you a reprieve on that one. I have Dr. Michelle Gillard here with me. She heads our mental health project or workforce in the district, and she has been working collaboratively on this project for mental health awareness, and I want her to have just a couple minutes to say a few things to you. Dr. Gillard?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Yost, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and the week of May 3rd through 9th was Children's Mental Health Week. We invite you to join us in marking the occasion by recognizing the essential role mental health plays in everyone's health and well-being, and joining together to fight the negative stigma that too often surrounds issues of mental health. I'd like to highlight a few facts about children's mental health. Approximately 20% of youth ages 13 to 19 experience severe mental disorders in any given year. Almost one-half of youth ages 8 to 15 with a mental illness received no mental health services in the previous year. One-half of all chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14. Over 50% of students with a mental health condition ages 14 and older who are served by special education drop out of school, the highest dropout rate of any disability group. And suicide is the third leading cause of death for individuals between the ages of 15 and 24. I would also like to thank the Board for your continued support of our work around mental health, especially Mrs. Hawley, who participates in our mental health task force. Through this task force, we introduced a program called Text Talk Act to our high schools. A big thank you to those schools who participated. Treasure Coast High School, Centennial High School, Port St. Lucie High School, and Mosaic Digital Academy. Teachers and staff report that this was an engaging and effective means of beginning the conversation about mental health. Thanks to activities like this, as well as ongoing collaboration with our community mental health agencies, we are able to positively impact the lives of our students. We encourage you to take a minute to think about mental health every day during the month of May. Together, we have come a long way to reach the understanding that mental health is a part of overall wellness that impacts everyone. Join us in taking the next step by marking Mental Health Awareness Month and Children's Mental Health Week in 2015. Thank you.
And at this time, Mrs. Michelle Digger will come forward with special thanks and recognition, our Star Award.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, good evening. We all know that our teachers are courageous, strong, character builders, and encouragers. So tonight, I'm honored to recognize two of our teachers that exemplify these qualities. Ms. Barbara Bennett is a third-grade teacher at Francis K. Sweet Magnet School. Ms. Bennett's interactions with her students have been so impactful that one of her parents was compelled to let us know about it. So let me share the email that this parent sent. She says, "I would like to take a few minutes to share with you how happy and pleased I am with Camilla's academic achievements. She is making great improvements in reading and comprehension. Thank you for all you do for the children in your class. Thanks for giving them great thinking skills and positive thoughts." Camilla is super happy that she got her Star Reader shirt, and she says that she will go on to the next level to get her next shirt. Thank you again for your great academic support and guidance. Ms. Bennett, we thank you for your commitment to all your students, and we congratulate what you've done with Camilla and her receiving her Star Reader shirt. And Ms. Bennett, I'll ask you to stay to the side here while I also present our other wonderful teacher, who is Ms. Belkus Madeira. She's a sixth-grade world history teacher at Oak Hammock K-8. This Star Award nominee actually comes from one of our Board Members. In March, Dr. Mills attended Ms. Madeira's class, where she had invited 40 Holocaust survivors, family members, and other dignitaries from the Boca Raton area to visit classrooms throughout the day to share their testimonies. The day accumulated in an assembly in the school's auditoria for the entire sixth-grade team, family, and community members. Exhibits of paintings, poems, and portraits of Holocaust survivors created by the sixth-grade students were displayed throughout the school's hallways. Ms. Madeira also teaches units of Hispanic heritage and African-American history. Ms. Madeira's dedication to building racial and cultural tolerance among her students has won her the Outstanding Holocaust Educator Award from the Center for Holocaust and Human Rights Education at the Florida Atlantic University. The award recognizes teachers who have had a positive impact on their schools and their community in the area of Holocaust, genocide, and human rights education. Ms. Madeira has said that she wants her students to learn that we are more alike than different. There is a vast world out there, and we need to learn how to get along. Ms. Madeira. Ms. Madeira? And I see that their principals are here, so if you could come up also. Ms. Wright, and, yep, there we go.
Congratulations again. if we have Ms. Madeira or Ms. Bennett's family and friends, please stand at this time.
Thank you for the support you offer our teachers. We appreciate it.
Again, we want to say thank you from the board, to each and everyone that played a part in this presentation. It was certainly a special night order of business, and we appreciate United Way. We thank United Way for, well, not United Way, but for our district for being so involved in helping United Way who gives back to the community and in tremendous ways. And we thank our district for putting yourself out there in your finances to help the community. Also, of course, Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, you teachers, you can be appreciated every week. I hope people, you have people around you that are letting you know that you are appreciated for the work that you do every day for every child. And also want to again thank Walmart Distribution Center, as well as Westgate K-8 for collaborating for that reading and inclusion garden. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Also, we want to recognize you, Mr. Kramer, for all of the work that you have done with autism awareness. I myself have been out there with the walk before, and it's absolutely amazing, all the young people who have autism out there and their families that's out there as well. This is just a fun day each year. Mental Health Awareness Month, we appreciate you as well and your presentation that you gave tonight, and we need to know more about that and not hide it up under a carpet somewhere or in a closet because our children need us on that level. I personally know several children that benefit from mental health awareness, and so we want to honor that month. At this time, we're going to move right along with our reports. We will first have our CTA report presented. Ms. Tillman, if you would, please come to the podium. And good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Yost, and to our viewing audience and to all of you here tonight. Just FYI, that we settled a contract, and we will go for ratification on May 21st. And at this time, I'd like to introduce incoming president-elect, Vicky Rodriguez.
I have a statement I prepared, but I'm just going to dispense with the statement, which could be a good thing or not, depending on how it goes. I do want to tell you about something. I had a teacher call me today, and this gives you some indication of the frustration that we have and why we constantly are talking about recruitment and retention, why we're constantly talking about what we need to do to improve morale and get people to stay. This teacher really wanted to talk to her principal about the fact that she really feels like she needs a different, different kind of school, different place to teach, wants to teach closer to home. She's an annual contract teacher. And she's wanting to be honest and forthright with her principal to let the principal know that she's probably going to be looking for another position, but the reappointment deadline is until the 29th. She has had outstanding evaluations all throughout the year. What her fear is, is that the principal is going to non-reappoint her if she tells the person that she really wants a different place to go, because that's the kind of thing that happens with this principal and others. We have got to get to a place where our annual contract teachers feel like they have some security, that it's not the luck of the draw, the pettiness, or whatever it happens to be. I wish I could tell you I was making this up, but I'm really not. I have, you know, three pages of other stuff that I could say, but I just need you to know that when we're talking about that kind of security for people, it's not $440 that's going to make them stay here. It's not recognition at a board meeting. It's that feeling of security and that they're valued, and that as they've done a really good job, they are being rewarded with the idea that they're going to have a job for the future. We shouldn't have people who are doing a good job, who come to this district, who are recruited from Michigan and Texas and wherever else we recruit them from, New York, feel like no matter what they do, they have to be super careful about who they say, who they hang around with, who they talk to, what trainings they attend, to make sure that they have a job for the next year. We should keep those people that are effective, that we are rating, the principal is rating effective, and if they're not the right fit for that school, we should try and find another school for them to go to. Because having 75 to 100 unfilled positions every year is not fair to kids, because every single one of those classrooms means that the person next door has been teaching next door to a permanent sub, has been helping that person do lesson plans, has been helping those kids get what they need, helping with discipline, which means that the kids in the classroom with the permanent sub all year aren't getting what they need, and neither are the kids in the other teacher's classroom, because that person's doing two jobs. We've got to do something about it. I don't know how else to say it. I say it at every board meeting that I can possibly say it. We have got to have a plan. We have got to have a plan, because it's not fair, and we're going to continue to lose them to the districts around us that all have an annual contract renewal provision in their contracts for teachers. I'm not making that up. You can look at any of those contracts. There are 37 contracts of the 67 districts that have an automatic renewal provision in their contract for people who are rated effective or highly effective. We can't keep doing what we're doing. Our results are not good enough to keep doing what we're doing. I am really looking forward to working in the 2015-2016 year and in the future. I'm ready to get on the boat, the bus, whatever the vehicle is that we choose for next year, and do what we need to do as a district to move us forward. And I'm certainly going to miss my partner, and I've learned from the best.
I'd like to thank Superintendent Yost and Dr. Perry for the teacher appreciation acknowledgement tonight. Superintendent Yost sent a note, sent emails out to all district employees, wishing them Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and I sent her email back and says, "How about recognizing?" So I thank you all for doing that. The idea that you can send a note, and it can happen. And I say thank you to both of you. Thank you to our Teacher of the Year, who also read the resolution. Now let me first begin to thank my union members, who elected me to serve over 30 years ago as an executive board member, to have served in every capacity except treasurer. As my career path continued, I was then elected for president for 12 years. I am humbled. And then tonight is my last night to speak to you as a board, in the seat of presidency, and I say farewell. I came to St. Lucie County as a kindergarten teacher at Port St. Lucie Elementary, and I was eternally grateful to James MacNeil and Ben Franklin, who I pay homage tonight to. Mr. MacNeil picked me up from the Greyhound bus station on US 1 and Avenue D. He took me to Ben Franklin's office, and they both interviewed me. And then they told, they told Victor Blackman, "This is the person we need at Port St. Lucie Elementary." I was hired as a kindergarten teacher, and then as a brand-new teacher in St. Lucie County. No family members, nowhere to go, I either had to sink or swim. But because as I was recruited, I had a good team of peers who kept me where I needed to be. They kept me grounded. And keep in mind, I came here in the '70s, working in times when we had some unrest in the county. However, as I was recruited, my parents had a sense of security of knowing somebody picked my child up from the Greyhound bus station, interviewed her, and put her back on the bus to get home, so we can prepare to send her for her first job here in St. Lucie County. That's what you call nurturing and caring, reaching out and forming that kind of connection with our young people. And I can say this, and say it very easily, because somebody took the time to care for me, but not only that, somebody took the time to pray for me. I developed a support group with my peers, my coworkers, my union brothers and sisters locally and statewide. I would be remiss if I not also include again, recruitment and retention is about building relationships, people you can trust, people you can count on, and of course, people who help you do what you need to do, get to work on time, do what you need to have done. Sometimes you have to stay late, but they help you get it done. That was what I had when I came to St. Lucie County. And of course, 38 years later, guess what? I'm still here because somebody cared. They didn't talk about caring, they showed me what caring was about. School board members, I have to go back to what Vicky referenced about our educators being reappointed. And I say to school-level administrators, as I asked you previously, "Have you done all you could have done to save somebody? Can non-reappointment meet the litmus test? Or should I ask you, 'Do you really have one?'" Then you should ask yourself, "Did I do all I could do to help this person?" Remember, this could be your child, your niece, your nephew, whomever. And I say to each of you tonight, "To thine own self be true." Because at the end of the day, regardless of the situation, the only person you actually have to live with is yourself, regardless of who is in your house. You have to live with yourself. I just plead with you once again, make sure that you have done all that you could have done to make someone be successful, because none of us are standing here without somebody helping us. Somebody had to pull us by bootstraps to pick us up. And I said earlier, somebody took the time to care for me, somebody took the time to nurture me, somebody took the time to pick me up from a Greyhound bus station and made a difference in my life. And tonight, as I said before, this is the last time I speak to the board. But my situation is so unique within itself, because I see Attorney Harold there, been knowing for a long time. I see Catherine Hensley there, a long time. Carol Hilson, a long time. Debbie Holly, Donna Mills, Troy Ingersoll. And last but not least, Janelle Yost was my principal at one point in time. That is a unique situation, and as all of you have been chairs, I've been afforded the opportunity to have real good candid conversations with you, knowing that I am pretty much a straight shooter. I tell you how it is. Of course, I may do it in a very nice way, but you know, I say what I mean, and I mean what I say. That is something that I don't compromise. Through all of this, I have always been a leader who believed in those conversations. I treasure the moments that our union and county have been forerunners for leading the state. When we had the half-cent sales tax referendum, we stood together. When we organized and demonstrated with Senate Bill 6, we made history across the state. Former Governor Charlie Crist said, "Little old St. Lucie, if they can do something, I know everybody can do something." And guess what? Senate Bill 6 was vetoed, because we stood together. Of course, we led the plight, but our folks went there with us, and we appreciate that. We were leaders with our interest-based decision-making process. Did we often agree to disagree? Yes, we did. And you know what? That's healthy, and it's perfectly okay. Over the past years, I've seen changes. I've been a part of changes. My educational journey has been one that has supported human and civil rights for all, and I do mean all. I've given of myself for the cause for a free, quality public education for our children. As I have worked in several schools across the district under different administrative leadership style, I've been able to grow professionally, have the intuitive ability to know, even though people are appointed in jobs, some need a little more time to But my goal was always to make a difference in the lives of others. Due process is a legal right that everyone has, and making sure that happens has been my obligation that I have taken very seriously. I knew that as I took this responsibility, I had no doubt. This was a charge I had to keep to all of my members. This school district has always talked about putting employees first, hiring the best and the brightest educators. We value our employees, and the list goes on and on. However, we all know, research says, happy employees bring about greater productivity. I believe that education is a civil right, and quality paid for educators equals a quality education for our children. Let me say that we all need to take a reality check on the morale of our educators here in St. Lucie County. My members have said to me, "I hear what you say. I also see how I'm being treated." Board members, now I say, "Please check your calendars and see how many times you've been to work sites just to check on the employees, not to read a book, but just to walk in the shoes and share the experiences that they continue to share with others." I would hope that constitutional officers feel an obligation to attend all work sites, so you can get the information firsthand and not hearsay. We all serve the community as a whole, but keep in mind that what's good for educators plus what's good for our children equals what's good for our community. In January, I invited all of you to go and shadow an educator. Regardless of the job title, it didn't matter. I just want you to go. I want the people to see that you really care about what they do, because you can tell me anything, and I may not believe you, but once you show me, and you're right there with me, it makes a difference. The school year will be beginning. Students will come. Educators will continue to give themselves. I ask of you to give yourselves. I challenge you to explore and examine the fund balances and give your employees a livable wage, not just a living wage. I say a livable wage. How valuable is it to have a fund balance that exceeds what the state recommends, and your employees are having to work two or three jobs and possibly be evicted? Lastly, but not least, John F. Kennedy says, "My fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." So board members, fellow educators, and viewing community, I paraphrase this for you. As fellow board members, ask not what your educators can do for our community, ask what you can do for your educators. My legacy will live on, knowing that it has been, what I always say is not what you say, it's how you say it that really makes the difference. As always in unity, Vanessa Tillman, Madam President of St. Lucie County Classroom, Teachers Association, given to you this 12th day of May 2015. Thank you.
We're going to miss you. You have been a good president, and you've worked with this county to ensure that we can continue to move forward. Thank you again. And I'm sure all of us as a board have taken to heart what you said. Thank you for the history lesson as well. Appreciate that. Also, Ms. Vicky Rodriguez, congratulations for your new appointment as president. And we certainly do look forward to working with you as well as a family, a school family, and moving forward. At this time, board members, it's time to move to our consent agenda. What happened? Oh, CWA. No report, I'm sorry. Forgive me for missing that. Okay, we will now move to our consent agenda, and we have the agenda before us. I would entertain a motion at this time that we accept the agenda as presented. So move by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hensley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then carries five zero. Are there any conflicts that any of the board members need to declare on any of the items that are coming before us this evening? Hearing none, Madam Superintendent, we ready to receive your recommendations.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve a total of seventeen consent agenda items, beginning with number eight and ending with number fourteen point two, as presented.
Board members, we have received the superintendent's recommendations. Are there any items you wish to comment on or to discuss and therefore pull out for Okay, seeing none, we have received the recommendations. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Superintendent Yost, may we now have our charter school information report?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, you have a summary of each of our charter schools. We provide you with monthly financial statements for your review. And at any time, if you have any questions, they are submitted to our business services division, and I'm sure that they would entertain any questions, but we do not vote on those, we simply review them on a monthly basis.
Board members, are there any questions? Okay, then we move right forward to your update, Madam Superintendent.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. With the consent agenda this evening, we have appointed several principals for the fiscal year 2016, and I would like to recognize them at this time in alphabetical order. We'll begin with Ms. Donahue Gill, who will be serving as principal at Floresta Elementary. Ms. Gill, if you could come forward, share a few words with us this evening.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair and Superintendent Yost. It is with great honor that I stand before you tonight to accept this position as principal at Floresta Elementary. I am looking forward to carrying on the traditions and academic excellence that Floresta is known for. I am dedicated to fostering the kids at hope philosophy within the school, as well as upholding the district's mission, vision, and core beliefs. But at this time, I would like to take a brief moment to thank some very important people. Mrs. Menachem, Mrs. Berenborg, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Davis. Each of, each one of you have played an important role in my career and given me the confidence to strive to higher heights. Your unending support will never be forgotten, and each of you will always be dear to my heart. To Ms. Floyd, who could not be here tonight, without you, I would not be here tonight preparing to be your replacement. You hired me in July 2001, saw something in me that I did not see, and have been my mentor ever since. I know that if I can be half the leader you have been, I will be successful. To Ms. Harden, thank you so very much for choosing me to be your AP three years ago. You took a chance on me, allowed me to grow and learn in the position, and taught me the importance of building relationships and that every child is a kid at hope. And finally, to my family, especially my daughter Alyssa, who is here tonight, who I am so proud of, she graduates and going to FSU this year. Without your love, support, and understanding, I could never have gotten to the place I am today as a person, mother, and leader. So with that being said, I thank you all again, and I excitedly await July first. Thank you.
And to round out the administrative team is Ms. Kimbree Lee Kane. And Kim Kane, if you could stand at this time, she will be the assistant principal. Moving to Windmill Point Elementary, we congratulate Nicole Ortega on her appointment
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Yost, and members of our audience. It is with great excitement and anticipation that I look forward to the opportunity to serve as principal at Windmill Point Elementary. I am committed to serving the staff, students, and families of Windmill Point by continuing the fabulous work of Mrs. Latricia Woolard. I'm excited to work with such an outstanding group of professionals, and I'm honored to be part of their team, and most of all, part of their family. Speaking of family, I have to take this moment to sincerely thank my loving family for their undying support and commitment to making me the professional I have become today. First and foremost, I have to thank my amazing husband, who has stood by me since the very beginning of my career. He has participated in it all, from decorating classrooms to cutting laminating film at twelve o'clock at night, and to carrying tables and chairs to setting up for back-to-school events. I couldn't have done it without him. To my daughter Isabella, who is beginning her educational journey this year in kindergarten, she is my glitter bug, who always wants to help me finish my work really quickly. I also have to remind myself, I wouldn't be who I am without my mom and dad, who taught me that dedication, loyalty, and hard work pay off. They led by example, and I am proud to call them my parents. Before I conclude, I have to thank one more person that is near and dear to my heart, Mrs. Jackie Lynch. She taught me the real meaning of instructional leader, and she taught me what it looks like and feels like to truly be supported. She helped me see that the principal was a real person too, and just because you had the big chair, didn't mean that you changed who you were or treated people differently. There's always that scary stigma about going to the principal's office, but with her, the principal's office was a place of dedication, collaboration, and warmth. Amazing things came out of our brainstorming session in that principal's office, and I hope to create that same environment at Windmill Point, where people feel free to stop by, lend a suggestion, and share a story. I am proud and humbled to be recommended for the position at Windmill Point Elementary. Thank you.
And I believe there are several members of Ms. Ortega's family with us. If you could stand at this time to be recognized. They're waving. And Isabella is back there as well. Thank you. Moving forward to Westgate K-8, please join me in congratulating Ms. Kristi Pococha on her appointment to the position of principal.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members, and Superintendent Yost. I want to thank you so much for appointing me as principal of Westgate K-8 and providing me with this amazing experience and opportunity. I'd first like to thank my principal, Todd Smith, who's unable to be here tonight, for his constant support and allowing me to strengthen my leadership skills. I'd also like to thank Dr. Ryle for inspiring me to pursue educational leadership many years ago. She's truly been an inspiration along the entire journey. I would also like to thank the administrative staff, Megan Guyer, Joseph Lazo, and Mimi Hoffman for their support each and every day. This would not be possible without you. I'd also like to thank the entire staff and student body of Fort Pierce Central. Without them, this would not be possible. I am truly blessed to have worked here in St. Lucie County for twelve years, and I'm looking forward to working with the students, staff, parents, and community members of Westgate K-8, and I'm excited for the upcoming school year. Thank you all again.
And an appointment to Okamic K-8, Ms. Brooke Wigginton, if you'll please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Yost. I am honored to be standing before you to accept my appointment as principal at Okamic K-8. Ten years ago, I came to St. Lucie County Schools to continue my dream of making a difference in the lives of children. During this time, the message that we as educators have the power to positively impact a student's life when we inspire hope, spark their imagination, and build a love for learning has resonated with me. I am continuously striving to impart these things each and every day, and will carry this into next year within my new role at Okamic K-8. Over the years, I've also had the pleasure of working for, with some amazing leaders in our county, who have showed me how hard work, dedication, and the value of instilling a positive culture can allow you to make an impact on a school and its faculty and students. Many of these leaders are with us today, and I thank you for all of your words of wisdom, guidance, and support. With me this evening are a few people whom I would also like to acknowledge. To my husband, Brian, when I chose to go into school administration, you told me to do it, but do it well. Thank you for always being there and supporting me as I continue to do what makes me happy. I love you and know that no matter what lies ahead, you will be there to support me. To my family that's here near and far, thank you for being amazing listeners, offering wonderful advice, and for your continued support and love over the years. You are all special to me. Glenn and Lori, thank you for welcoming with open arms to Northport, guiding me through the world of a K-8. You are both amazing leaders, and I will value your friendship and advice for years to come. To the faculty and staff of Northport K-8, you are an amazing staff that have supported me since I arrived two years ago. I would not be able to take this step without all that I've learned from you. And to Dr. Rendell, you've been an amazing mentor that has offered insight and advice, even though your next steps take you away from St. Lucie County, I know that you will always be only a phone call away. And finally, the role of principal is a great responsibility, but it is also an amazing opportunity to demonstrate all I have learned and how capable, and how capable I am. I am sure I will not disappoint you, and I assure you that I will work every day for the good of St. Lucie Public Schools and Okamic's faculty, staff, and students. Thank you for your belief in me and this wonderful opportunity. I am looking forward to joining the Ospreys and soaring to excellence.
And those individuals that Brooke referenced just a moment ago, if you could please stand at this time, you are going to be a phenomenal support network for her, and we appreciate And since I also see Ms. Carmen Peterson in the audience, three of the appointments that we've mentioned thus far are because three of our administrators, our principals, will be retiring this year. So I'd like to recognize Mrs. Carmen Peterson, if she could just stand at this time. She won't be leaving us until November, so she'll offer lots of support and guidance along the way. But Ms. Peterson, thank you for all you have done for others. We also have Ms. Latricia Woolard in the audience with us this evening. She will be transferring from Windmill Point to St. Lucie Elementary, and we congratulate you. Did you want to share a few words this evening? Thank you, Ms.
Board members, Madam Chair, and Ms. Yost, two years ago, I can remember standing at this podium, accepting my principalship at Windmill Point, and I was excited. And Nicole, you're going to a wonderful home with great teachers, great families, and great students. But now, I am excited to be transferred back home to St. Lucie Elementary and taking the helm as the principal there. So thank you so much for entrusting me to be the principal of St. Lucie Elementary.
You do a wonderful job. Thank you, Ms. We also appointed to the position of direct, as Director of Leadership Development in the Personnel Department, Ms. Denise Rodriguez, and we congratulate her on her appointment as well. Additionally, we have an update this evening on our customer service within the Transportation Department. So if I could ask our Transportation Director to come forward at this time, Mr.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Yost, and to our audience. The lessons from the past and the challenges of today, and the opportunities of tomorrow, have all been a factor in shaping and determining how we relate to our students, their parents, and our own staff. We will listen to our customers and address their concerns. We will listen to our staff and work with our union partners to improve our working relationships with the goal of every decision to result in a win-win-win scenario. If any decision is determined to be a win for the district, a win for our students, and a win for our employees, then we should move forward. We cannot always meet everyone's needs or make everyone happy, but our decisions should always be based in concern for those we affect. St. Lucie District Schools Transportation, what does it look like today? Student engagement begins here. When we say engagement, one thing that we think about is relationship, because we do encourage our drivers on a continuing, on a continuing and a regular basis to develop a relationship with their students. Many students can go through many different features while they still keep the same bus driver daily. So the relationship is something that we do focus on within our staff and with our drivers. Little bit of background for you, we provide forty-eight thousand student trips per day, that's both AM and PM. That would be twenty-four thousand students to school and the same ones home in the afternoon. And we serve three thousand two hundred and ten stop locations, and that is individual locations, meaning we have several buses that make several different stops at the same time every day. That relates into over six million miles traveled annually, and sixty percent of our enrolled students ride. Now, that sixty percent number gives us a first in the urban classification within the state, which is how the state classifies our district as urban. And to give you a basis to go by, Brevard County is at thirty-five percent ridership in the same classification. We receive around three hundred and thirty phone calls every day. Now, that's a big number. We field as many of them as we can, return the calls that we don't get to as soon as possible. But just as a comparison, that still represents point six-nine percent of our student ridership, or less than three-quarters of one percent is what we receive in phone calls. And those phone calls can come from parents, they can come from schools, they come from the public in general, they relate to questions as, where's my child's bus? I just moved, where's my bus stop? And the list just goes on and on for the number of questions that we field. How do we field those incoming calls? We currently have forty-eight incoming lines. At the school startup, we bring in a staffing agency with temporary employees, which we train those employees, and also provide them a script to answer phone calls or to get the parents or whoever the caller is to the person they need to get those answers. Now, of course, during a normal school year, after that staff has gone, we are unable to provide enough staff to answer those forty-eight incoming lines all the time. And there are calls that do ring and do not get answered as they should. But we constantly are looking for ways to work with our own personnel to maximize our staff and to get as many phone calls answered as possible. Now, currently, our communication can be fragmented or even isolated. We have several published numbers. Our personnel are spread out across more than one compound, we have three different ones. And that doesn't really promote the best resources or the cross-training or the collaboration among our employees to give the best possible answers in the most timely manner. So often, our drivers might get a fragmented response or a different response from a manager or a router, and we're working on that to make sure that everybody is receiving the same message from anyone they may ask. Technology, it's awesome. What we have, where we're going, we've invested heavily in this recently with the GPS system and the camera systems for the buses, and I can tell you that it's already paying dividends. In our garage, the buses are no different than your cars, you need a laptop computer to touch any of them, and our technicians are often walking around carrying their laptops to do diagnosis. The GPS or the AVL system, this has been a huge plus, a huge benefit. We can not only tell you where our buses are and how fast they're going, but we can tell you where they were yesterday, the day before, a week ago, a month ago, and even farther back, to where they have been, the stops that they made, the time that the stop was made, how long they were at the stop, how long the bus had their idling. There's just an incredible amount of information that's coming out of the system that we're still learning, we're still developing, and we're still getting up to speed on. The camera systems, we've invested in systems to put a four-camera camera system. The camera systems, we've invested in systems to put a four-camera camera system on every bus. That installation is still in process and will continue. I worked most of the school year as a manager, meaning I worked with the schools in reference to getting the camera system information to them, the videos to them. I personally have over 350 videos from this school year alone that have been removed from a bus, and I was one of six managers, so that tells you the effect this system has had. Our routing system, we'll use the GPS information, which will improve our accuracy and efficiency, and we do have five buses that are currently enabled with Wi-Fi on a pilot test program, and that is for our students to use their wireless communication devices in a Wi-Fi environment to do homework, do research, as they're going along on their bus ride. And just so nobody gets upset, this is through the school system Wi-Fi network, so it is monitored, it is the same system they use at the school. So, the ability for them to get to certain websites is certainly limited to the same as it would be in a school. So, what do we have coming up for '15 and '16? We plan to improve our communication with both our internal and our external customers. We're going to realign our staff and think of a 911-type environment or a 911-type call center where we can get more than one department into the same room at the same time, and this will better utilize our personnel for handling faux calls. We're going to train our staff to utilize this technology and how to disseminate the information. Think of a multi-screen type of setup, which will put a GPS information, a direct radio contact with the phone, a school, and then also the school messenger system would be available for us to see real-time information and to give real-time feedback and accurate information. Most larger school districts are already using this type of technology in the service center, and the software allows us to monitor all aspects of our incoming and outgoing calls. Currently, all our phone lines are recorded. This, again, has been an asset that has been invaluable for us in determining what happened, how it happened, what was said, who said it, and how it was said. And as Ms. Tillman alluded to earlier, it's not always what was said, but how it was said, and we certainly use this system often to determine that and to, quite frankly, make corrections on our own staff when it was necessary. We are also going to be able to identify our peak times for calls coming in, and a common database will give us all the same information. The schools will also benefit from this call center-type environment. We are moving forward with that customer service center, as well as in other areas, to improve our communications, not only internally and externally. We currently have a monthly meeting with our union partners to address their concerns, to make sure that their concerns are heard, and to make sure that if the answer is no, that there is an explanation that goes along with it, or to give us an opportunity to update what we are doing and what we are putting into effect. Our drivers are supported directly by their managers, and we currently have electronic message boards in all three compounds. This is a PowerPoint-type presentation which rolls continually. We can put any information on the slides, we can update it if necessary, and we can provide that information so as drivers are coming and going, as our attendants are coming and going, they're able to stop and look and keep up to date on any information we need to provide for them. The buses also have a message capability, and again, this won't be done while driving. Think of a tablet-type device, these are already mounted in the buses, they were part of the GPS system that we purchased, and we will be able to communicate with the drivers as in a broadcast message in service tomorrow, 10:30 to 11:30 at the district office, or individually to Johnny Smith's mom will not be at the bus stop, please do not allow him off the bus. The tablet goes dark when they're driving, so they cannot see it or interact with it, but as the bus stops and is parked and the brake comes on, the tablet will come up, and they would have to identify and acknowledge that they've received the message. So, we are still, the device is in the bus, we are still working on the program to get that all uprunning and working, and that is in our upcoming services for summer to get going for next school year. So, as far as customer service is concerned, our goal is to create a customer-centered service culture. Our customer contacts will move from a multiple silo or isolated-type situations to, again, getting more than one department in the same room to provide timely answers. Our response time to phone inquiries should be reduced, and this should give us a better response to our customers. We also will provide a survey to our schools and to our parent customers that they'll be able to grade us or tell us how we've done in any given scenario. So, what does this customer service center makeup look like? It will be primarily dispatchers and clerical personnel would be the primary staff. There will be phones and two-way radios, they're available for all to use. Routers would be in the room also, mainly to provide information and answers, but they could also pick up overflow calls as they come in, and other staff would be rotated in at the peak times to make sure that our call volume is covered. Our routing request would go to an electronic submittal system, that that would be an avenue for our customer, our parents, to check on a bus stop or to make that request. We have also implemented, you may have seen on our homepage of the school district, a Bus Concerns email. This gives our customers, our parents, our students, a direct link to email us and gives us a way to measure that the responses are being given and being given in a timely manner. We'll also be to evaluate the timeliness of our service and assure compliance with any policy or board approval. The technology projects have been the GPS upgrade, which we talked about, the routing software is also being upgraded, the initial database is in place, and training is in progress for that. The significance of this system is it will use real-time GPS to backfeed our system, so we not only have to determine, right now, we determine how long it should take, this system will tell us how long it does take, and that will definitely improve our efficiency. Our field trip software needs to be replaced, Lotus Notes is outdated, and that's in the process of being done, as well as Sleet Software to go to a paperless shop. For transportation operations, as always, we will focus on efficiency and safety that we provide to our customers, and this technology is going to allow us to do that much better. The new routing software and the GPS implementation will also help us to minimize the ride time for our students, and the tracking is a big part of this too, because it will reduce our cost per student through controlling our expenditures. Back to the field trip software, it will be more user-friendly, it will give an online reservation system for our schools to go directly online and make the request for their trips. One thing that was brand-new for this year is our answer in the past had always been one student, one seat, one bus. We did develop a pay rider program this year, what was rolled out at the start of this school year. This would be in certain circumstances for parents to be able to get another bus if they chose a second bus, a second location for their student to go to. And again, this would be applicable under certain circumstances. That generated about $4,200 in revenue for the district with 21 riders, with no additional cost to the Transportation Department in making it happen. Also, in our nonprofit daycare, you'll see that that generated $95,000 in revenue using about 475 riders that were using that service. The transportation fleet upgrade that we're doing will give us an accurate cost per mile and will help us identify what make and model of equipment is most efficient and allow us to make smart purchases in the future. It also, along with the GPS system, is giving us excessive idling reports, which is a huge deal, it's a big cost to the district when you start doing the math on the number of buses we have and the amount of time they may spend idling. So, we are currently using this report, and we'll implement it more in the future to make sure that we eliminate as much excess idling as possible. We will use benchmarks and scorecards, we will grade ourselves to how we are doing. The ABO, or Average Bus Occupancy, is an efficiency standard, and that affects state funding. Our on-time percentage will also be measured, which is really is what is most important to our customer, which is our parent. Community outreach, coming up on May 30th, Saturday, we are participating in a Family Safety Day at Tradition Field. We will want to have one of our brand-new buses on display where parents can get on the bus, they can see what their students ride in. We will highlight the three-point seatbelt system, which we got on all of our new seatbelts, and they're all equipped with that. We will also showcase our new technology, which will show our GPS system and how we can locate and track the buses, as well as providing handouts for adults and the children. So, to sum it all up, for '15-'16, we will improve our customer service, we'll be able to make data-driven decisions, we will score ourselves to see how we're doing and allow our customers to do the same. We will provide the most service we can within our current resources, and we will realign our staff to improve and support our communications. The call center project that is moving forward, the cost of the furniture and the radio and additional equipment that will be needed is to be determined. The vision of the district is to move from good to great. In transportation, we take that quite literally and believe it is our role to actually move our students daily from good to great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardison, and I cannot thank you enough, especially from our internal stakeholders, for listening and adjusting your plans to be more customer-friendly. We appreciate your efforts, as well as Mr. Carter's, to move forward in the 2015-'16 school year, to raise your level of expectation, as well as open yourselves to accountability and to listen to the customer overall. So, internally and externally, we say thank you, and we look forward to a phenomenal fiscal year 2016, but we also see some differences as you've begun the implementation this year as we move towards the next. Thank you.
Thank you for your help and support and for providing us the tools that we need. Thank you.
Additionally, Board members, I wanted to comment on Algebra I and, of course, exams. Some of you have been receiving some written communication from families, as well as our Assessment Division has received some inquiries by phone. I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent of School Improvement, Mr. John Lynch, to come forward at this time and summarize the investigative information we have acquired and solutions as we move forward. Mr. Lynch?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Ms. Yost. As Superintendent Yost said, we did have a mishap at one of our schools today involving the Algebra I exam. As you know, there are two sessions to the Algebra I exam. On Session 1, it does not allow for the use of a calculator. On Session 2, there is a calculator that's not only in the software, but we provide a handheld calculator should the student prefer that. Unfortunately, today at one of our schools in Session 1, where they should not have a calculator, the human error caused the mistake, and a calculator was issued for Session 1. As per state protocol, in a situation like that, we immediately called the DOE for a ruling as to what we should do, and the ruling from the DOE that was handed down through the Assessment Department was that we had to invalidate 22 Algebra I tests today, absolutely due to human error. I assume responsibility as the head of assessment, but what, moving forward, what we need to do at this point, the first thought, you might think that we could do a makeup exam tomorrow. Unfortunately, that is not an option that the Florida Department of Education provides us. What we have to do, unfortunately, is to wait until July to take a makeup exam. And immediately, that brings a multitude of concerns to the forefront as to the lag time between instruction ending on, in June, of course, and the test in mid to late July. We are in contact with the school, we are putting a plan together. The plan is that those students will take that makeup, we will provide a number of supports for those students prior to that exam in the summer, that parents and students can both utilize at home via a web-based product, as well as a face-to-face, we call them bootcamps, or review classes prior to that assessment. Unfortunately, we did have some communication with parents, and they're looking for a makeup exam, and I just want to emphasize that that is not an option. That is not a decision on the part of the St. Lucie Public Schools, that's a state decision that we must adhere to. The only way to rectify our error, and I'll repeat that, our error, is to do the makeup exam in July.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. It is unfortunate that it has occurred. We wanted you to understand what had occurred and that we will put in place as many supports as possible for our young people that were impacted by this error that occurred, the human error. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. And then to conclude my report, since Ms. Tillman, we hope you'll be back for the next meeting, but we want to thank you for your years of service to St. Lucie Public Schools. It has been a pleasure working with you, and we know you'll find lots of opportunities in retirement in the days ahead. Have a great retirement.
Mr. Carter and Mr. Hardison, can we, as a Board, receive hard copies of your presentation tonight? Thank you. Okay, Attorney Harold, do we have any reports?
No item unless there is some question concerning the brief amendment to Mr. Gent's agreement.
Okay, well, we're going to move along with that and see if any questions might arise. Okay, the effective date for the employment agreement with Mr. Wayne Gent as Superintendent of Schools is currently July 4, 2015, and was based upon Mr. Gent's availability for employment at the time the agreement was negotiated. So, since then, Mr. Gent has indicated that because of changes to his employment arrangement with West Palm, with the Palm Beach County School Board, he is now available to commence employment in St. Lucie County as of July 1. And the only change is the revision of the subparagraph 7A-I, which is to remove the first-year salary duration language, because with the change in effective date, the first year of the agreement would be a full calendar year. So, at this time, I am asking for motion on the floor...
So moved. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Ingersoll. Okay. So moved by Mr. Ingersoll.
I read it earlier.
Second? Second by Ms. Hensley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we approve that, 5-0. Board member updates. May we begin with Ms. Hawley? Ms. Hensley?
Yes, ma'am. There are a couple of things. One is that we had our five-county work group last week. There are several, as you know, the session was pretty much a meltdown at the end. That helped us in some way because some really bad bills did not pass. The unfortunate thing is that we also have no concept of budget, and they will be going back into session June 1. We are monitoring very closely that some of the bills that we believe are harmful to our mission are not snuck in anywhere, so we'll be monitoring very, very carefully. And we have several entities that will be doing that, not just the people that we deal with, but statewide, counties, cities, other entities are doing the same thing. Tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, Florida Children's and Youth Cabinet Meeting will be in St. Lucie County for the first time. That organization was put together, signed into law in 2007. It was started, the discussion started in 2004 by some people who belonged to Children's Services Councils around the state and like-minded organizations that decided we need to help the state make children a priority, but we didn't have a lot of statistics. So, we amassed some money, we hired people to come in, and spent about two years to craft the legislation after we knew what the lay of the land was. It did pass, legislation was signed into law, and they will be meeting tomorrow at the STEM Building in St. Lucie West at IRSC at 9 o'clock. Everybody's welcome, it's an open meeting. Out of that meeting, several things have come over the years, such things as the, looking at the mental health crisis with children, the Child Death Abuse Review Committees, a variety of different entities. They haven't had the traction that we had hoped they would have, but they're a very dedicated group of people. They include the Secretary for the Department of Health, the Secretary for Juvenile Justice, the Secretary or Commissioner for Education, top people in the department. They don't have a designee, they are there. So, it is an opportunity to see some people that you may wish to have some opportunity to interface with. The start off will be Mr. Boyle, Sean Boyle, from our Children's Services Council, who's also the Chair of the State Organization for Children's Services, will be giving a presentation, and we hope that this is an opportunity to build some stronger relationships with some people out of Tallahassee.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley, for your report. Ms. Carol Hilson?
We had, we've had something every night and every day, I think, different events. We've been privileged, and it was a privilege to go to so many of these. A thank you to Fort Pierce Central for hosting our Education Foundation Awards Scholarship Night. It was well-done and well-presented. And then, we had, several of us had the opportunity to go to Westwood and see the FFA Awards, and I haven't seen those for a while. I was incredibly impressed by the process that these students had, they must have practiced it quite a lot, because it went very, very smoothly, and it was different, and it was enjoyable, and hats off to Westwood, they did a super job, the FFA group. And Sam Gaines, I attended yesterday. Tracy Wilkie did an incredible job. Everything was prepared beautifully for the people that visited, and several, several of us were able to attend that. We got to really see the AVID program, which I'm a big cheerleader for AVID, and... We got to really see the AVID program, which I'm a big cheerleader for AVID, and so it was just presented very well, and I think we had a fairly good turnout. So, I see a turnaround at Sam Gaines. I saw some great, great positive things going on, and I'm really encouraged by what I saw. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson. Ms. Ingasol?
No report.
Okay, as for myself, I wanted to thank Mr. Carter and Mr. Hardison for that presentation. It was very informative and very in-depth, and looking forward to some great things coming up the following school year based on that presentation. Thank you so much. Also, I wanted to congratulate our principals, our newly-appointed principals, Ms. Gill at Floresta, and Ms. Ortega at Windmill Point, and Ms. Pacosha at Westgate, and Ms. Wigginson at Oak Hammock K8. And what I want to say to each of our newly-appointed principals, you have some big shoes to fill, but we are sure you can do that and you can handle it, so we're looking forward to the progress there. Also, yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend Southern Oaks, which had another Holocaust survivor come and speak, as well as a video, I believe it was for all the students, was it all the students that were? Seventh grade, well, it was a huge amount of students who sat through a video that was over an hour long, I believe, and you can hear pen drop throughout that video that was shown. And I just want to thank the Principal of Southern Oaks, as well as Mr. Todd Hibbert Bard, for having the insight of going through the history and showing our students things that they really do need to know and they need to see. And it's amazing how captivated they can be when they have a personal speaker come who have experienced such a horrific event. So, I thank our teachers for being able to really expand the learning experience for our students, and it was a great experience yesterday at Southern Oaks. Okay, at this time, we are going to prepare to close our meeting. We do not have any scheduled speakers, so we will end with a reminder of our mission statement. Our mission statement states that St. Lucy County Public Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, the skills, and the desire to succeed. We look forward to seeing all at our next board meeting, which will be held May 26, 2015. Good night to all. We are adjourned.